All right, thank you. All right, well, good evening and welcome to the July 24th Planning Commission meeting. And Jackie, you want to do roll call?
Yes.
Here.
Commissioner Niveloff.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
Present.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here, thank you. So next we have on our agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Does anyone have any edits or changes to the agenda?
I move approval of the meeting agenda.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye, motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from the July 10th, 2019 Planning Commission. Does anyone have any edits or comments?
Thank you. So in the discussion beginning on, let's see, in the public hearings, we had a site plan review and site back variants for 6950 France Avenue. A few comments. Beginning on page five, in the discussion comments questions, oh, page four, in the discussion comments questions, first of all, there are two bullets there, and then it says Mr. Max Morland, Spate Consulting, I think that's SPAC, that's just a typo. And then there are a few bullets in here in this discussion comments questions that, in my opinion, don't relate to the property. They're just a discussion about farm-based code and reopening issues that were discussed with the Southdale Small Area Plan. And I think we should just take, it's fine to have those discussions, I guess, although I hate to continually discuss things that we agreed to. But some of the things that are unrelated to the project, I think we should just take them out of the minutes, and we should only, the minutes should only reflect the, you know, discussion about the project itself and the building itself. So I think that'd be like the second and third bullet. And the last bullet on this page, yeah, I think those are just, those really are unrelated to the project and shouldn't be part of the minutes. That's my recommendation. So I'd recommend removing them from the minutes.
Is there any discussion? I wasn't there, so we...
I will, I will second.
Okay. Yeah, no, any discussion, any other comments? Discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so apologies, now I've got to move back. All right, so next on the agenda is a public hearing, and it's a zoning ordinance amendment, PUD 14, for 3650, did I just miss it? Sorry, we're still, apologies, we're all doing this, you know, on our laptop now, and I lost my agenda. Right, we have to do the community comment first. So sorry. Is there any community comment? Seeing none?
Move to close community comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thanks. Okay, now, we're going to go to the public hearing, the zoning ordinance amendment, 3650 Hazelton Road.
Okay, thank you, chair members of the commission. Before you, we have a request for a, is this on?
Okay, there we go. Zoning ordinance amendment to PUD 14. This is the Hazelton Road Apartments. A lot of people refer to it as the old Guitar Center site. So it's located in the Southdale District, right along the promenade on Hazelton Road.
So Carrie, all we're seeing is you. Oh, now we're good. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Located just east of France Avenue. There's a picture of the Guitar Center building, that would be removed. So just to refresh and give a little bit of background, back in 2018, the Planning Commission and City Council granted preliminary approval of the project. That included a comprehensive plan amendment and the preliminary rezoning. At that time, the proposal was for 186 units and 19 stories, 298 parking stalls. When the applicant, the developer, came back in for final approval, they reduced the number of units down to 167 units. But the plans that you all reviewed and the traffic study was based on was the 186 units. And again, the council did approve that on a preliminary basis. So the applicant is back, and they would like to essentially go back to that original request at preliminary approval, their original application, although it's actually one less unit. So the proposal, what they would like to build is 185 units and 18 stories. So they would reduce the height of the building by one story. They would also reduce parking from 298 stalls to 277. That's a 1, 1.5 stalls per unit. So it's still, might even say, on the higher end of some of the apartment projects that we've reviewed recently. So with that, this request requires, it's just, it's an amendment to that, to the zoning ordinance that established that PUD 14 zoning district, which is a zoning district just for this site. So I'll just quickly show you some graphics. The building materials haven't changed, the footprint of the building hasn't changed, the site plan hasn't changed, it's really the exact same project, just with those changes, the unit count and the parking spaces. So on the left is the approved plan, and on the right, the proposed plan. The applicant will go through in a little more detail, but you can see, it's really hard to distinguish between the two. More some of those ground-level shots. Again, here's a demonstration of the building materials, all the same, brick building with metal, metal siding as well. This is the approved site plan on the left, and the proposed site plan. So kind of the yellowish areas, that's green space, and the orange are the sidewalks, again, exactly the same as was originally approved. So the zoning ordinance itself, this is a table from within the zoning ordinance, so we're simply making those changes to 18 stories and 210 feet. The parking stall number has been reduced. And the floor area ratio that was included in the previous code was seven. We may have been including parking areas, I'm not sure why that number was so high, but it is 4.6. So primary issue, is this, are the proposed amendments reasonable to justify the revisions? Staff believes they are. The proposal would simply reduce the height of the building by one story. The number of units is essentially the same, one less than was reviewed and approved as part of the preliminary review, preliminary rezoning. There's no changes to the building material, general look is the same. We did ask SPAC Consulting to take a look at the reduced parking, that memo was included in your packet. They have concluded that the parking that they're proposing with the 277 stalls is adequate to serve the project. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance amendment, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, so Carrie. Commissioner Strauss.
Carrie, can, perhaps you could just walk through, the Planning Commission, I don't, the dates, I guess, are not important, we looked at 186 units.
Correct.
Which is what we approved.
Correct.
And then, the City Council, which was probably just some weeks later, right, approved 167.
Nope. So the council, a few weeks later, approved 186 also. So that this is, with rezonings, it's a two-step process. So they came through, got preliminary rezoning at the 186 units, then they come back where there might be some conditions that were suggested, where the plans get revised slightly, and the final rezoning only goes to the City Council. And so it was at that time that the applicant reduced the number of units.
That's, that's what I wanted to see how that processed. So what, the Planning Commission and the City Council, I mean, both saw this project, you know, and just in kind of the normal course, that revision was made, but now they're coming back, so.
Correct.
That's good.
You see both mics. Anyone else have questions for Carrie? No, okay, thanks, Carrie. And with the applicant, would you like to present?
Thank you, commissioners, my name is Trey Shach, ESG Architects. I presented a year ago.
In, sorry, my name is Trey Shach, ESG Architects, I'm a Minneapolis resident. I presented the original proposal back on March 28th of 2018 to you and to the City Council, two weeks later, April 14th. And Carrie is absolutely right, the actual unit counted, those, both of those hearings, was at the 185, or 186 count. So we're really, to, we kind of see tonight as just really a numbers thing more than a design, so I, you know, unless there were some questions regarding design, I don't have much to offer on that level. And without seeming too gimmicky, I do have one side-by-side, but Carrie has basically shown you everything you need to see with regards to, I don't know how this works here, sorry. This is kind of a side-by-side comparison, first of all, just numerically, the building height went from 19, which was 218 feet, down to 18 stories or 207 feet. One less unit, the overall gross building square footage dropped, the floor area ratio dropped. This was an actual calculation of that design a year-plus ago. Parking count change, and we actually did this other number, number of bedrooms actually dropped as well. Because sometimes you do a parking per unit or parking per bedroom ratio when you're analyzing this type of thing. But as Terry said, that ratio is well within the comfort zone. And then, the last is the side-by-side, and the, I don't mean to sound trite, but this is literally one story less than that. And what we basically did was took a floor out in the middle of the tower, and just dropped the expression by a floor. Everything else is identical, materials, landscape plan, everything, except for the numbers, so.
Could you maybe just explain why you're making this request? I know you had it in the application, but just so maybe everyone can hear.
Do you want to answer that, or do you want me to? Okay. I'm going to let Tom Lund answer that question.
I'm Tom Lund, I am the applicant, and I'm, do you need my address, or anything, any information? I mean, Edina residents. Well, it's been a long journey, these projects are huge. This is a $100 million project, and it's just been a journey for all of us. And, you know, I think it's a little bit early on, when, you know, last year, you're kind of throwing a little bit of a dart, you know, you think you've got it right for the, for the market, but also for the capital markets. And the capital markets didn't, we went to the capital markets, US and international with CBRE, and our development partner, Gray Star, and we weren't able to secure the equity, which is a lot of equity on a project like this. And so, basically, at the end of the year, we had to retool and take a look at the project differently. And essentially, that, the denominator, which is the 186 versus the, the 167 versus the 185, now, that denominator is very important to the capital markets. There weren't any buildings that cost as much per unit as this building in the market, in the Twin Cities market. New York, San Francisco, those places, yes, but not here. So we had to adjust the cost per unit, which meant that there, you could get an appraisal, and the banks would finance it, the equity players would come in. So we went back to the market, and we were successful. So now we have the equity, and we're, with this, with this, you know, hopeful approval, we will move forward and start construction, well, we'll go into construction drawings this fall, finish those, and then just after the first of the year, we'll start demolition and then construction. So that's, it's just one of those things we couldn't predict, that's how we ended up here. And we knew we couldn't exceed, you know, the 180, 86, or, per the comp plan, so, so that's, that's, in a nutshell, that's how we ended up here.
Appreciate your explanation.
Sure.
I'm glad that you were able to make it work. Does anyone else have other questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much for explanation, that is actually, I had the same question, so thank you. On a different subject, parking, it appears that you have about 1.4 bedrooms per unit, and you have 1.5 parking spaces per unit. Parking is a huge issue that we're going to, that we're dealing with more and more, and we're going to increasingly deal with that issue, I think. Could you just explain your thinking about how you got comfortable with 1.5? Because obviously, you'll hear from your residents if that's not successful.
Yeah, right, right. Well, you know, I mentioned this over a year ago, you know, I was the developer on the Carlisle and Grant Park and Nick on Fifth, and we, that's, I'd say, you're kind of in the 1.5, you know, I don't remember exactly what it was, Grant Park was maybe 1.57, and Carlisle was 1.5, and Nick on Fifth was right, right in that range. And that's what, you know, these big towers, just felt comfortable that, that was a number that worked in it, and frankly, it worked out perfectly on all three of those projects that I worked on. I wish we could build less. I did a tower at the University of Minnesota just recently on, across from the old Radisson on Washington Avenue, and, in Stadium Village. And that's 438 units, and we have 150 parking stalls in the entire project. But that's on light rail, and that's been a game changer. And if we were to do Nick on Fifth, or if I was involved with that today, we'd do half the stalls that we did, I'd say, just because people have adapted now to Uber and Lyft and the light rail. So we don't, we don't have that, we don't have that here, but, you know, I think the best comparison's for me, based on my experience really, is Grant Park and Carlisle, where people had to have cars, because there really wasn't that public transportation, and we really don't have that here either. So I think it's, it feels right, to me, so that's, that's my best answer.
And I defer to you, you, you know, I've worked with people from your architecture firm, and Mr. Lund, you're, you're a known expert in the field, so my knowledge is a trickle of yours. But one, the two things that I've seen can drive parking requirements, other than the tenant mix, are proximity to jobs and proximity to mass transit. And because there aren't jobs in that area, and there is limited mass transit, I like the idea of the parking you have, and I like that vision. But if it, if it proves by any, in any chance to not be sufficient, do you have kind of a Plan B to adjust if tenants are dissatisfied, if you are having concerns?
Driverless cars and Uber and Lyft, I mean, that's really, I think, I honestly, I mean, everybody in our industry's talking like, you know, and they're seeing it, you know, more and more. It's just we're using less and less cars at these, and there's, I'm seeing with the millennials, I mean, I've got three millennials in my family, my kids, and people are buying one car, a lot of their friends are just buying one car, and they're just completely satisfied with that. So I just think, you know, it's happening slowly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's, I was just going to say, I think a lot of it does depend on the final demographic of who's actually living here, but our society and use of cars is changing, and this is the first component of a walkable, you know, community. So it's, it's hard to, you know, justify it maybe right out of the gate, but once, once more and more development happens, jobs will be coming, you know, there's certainly a lot of services within walkable distance here that you wouldn't need the car for. And I think that will be one of the attractions to this property for residents. That's one of the great appeals, is that it is in the middle of everything right now, so. We did run into, as an aside.
Can you hand him the microphone?
I'm sorry. As an aside, we did run into a little higher water table than anticipated, and for environmental reasons, that actually took a bite into the overall parking, because we didn't want to raise the water higher than it already was. We felt that would have a stronger negative impact, and, you know, than reducing stalls, as long as we reached a comfort level with the stall count per unit or per bed, that's what mattered most, so.
Well, thank you. One of the things that I've learned in my review of the studies is that usually, mass transit follows housing, not the other way around. And so hopefully, this will be a catalyst for that.
Yes. And we are aware of several other projects kind of in the works, and I think there's a momentum and a sort of a critical mass that will basically necessitate more mass transit for all of it, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, to Mr. Lund, I really appreciate, I like that background information about the parking needs based on these projects, I mean, Nick on Fifth, which I just walked by the other day, and the one in Stadium Village. It just seems like you guys are the expert, and you're trying to catch up with these developments too, I mean, like with Uber and Lyft and mass, you know, and I think that maybe, we're further behind in that learning curve too, is to, these, these things are changing, and I was surprised to hear just how dramatic it was when you talked about maybe half the parking, I mean, that's, things do change, and it does take a while to get the thought, the planning, whole planning process through, yeah.
I don't, I mean, 20 years from now, I suspect we're going to be, we sure built too much parking, but, you know, today.
Yeah, okay, yeah, well, thank you.
Christian Douglas-Cover.
Thank you for the explanation about parking, Mr. Lund. I wanted to ask, or maybe state an assumption, I think that since it's a rental community, you could also drive parking demand through pricing for parking as well, so that would be a tool in your tool belt, correct?
Sure, sure, yeah, points, thanks. We did that at Carlisle, when we sold, that was condo, but we definitely managed parking through, you know, pricing, we were at $30,000 to, I think, $55,000 per stall, and it was, it was dead on. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments, great? Thank you. So this is also a public hearing, is there anybody from the public hearing?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye, motion carries. So bring it back to the Planning Commission, are there any other comments or motion?
So I, my only comment beyond, beyond our discussion is that I'm gratified to see this before us. We reviewed this about a year, 16 months ago, and I was kind of wondering, well, where'd it go? So I appreciate the discussion about your path to get here, and I appreciate to hear your, your path to start demolition and construction. And so I'm in favor of the proposal, I think it's going to be a great, I used the word before, I'll just, I'll use the same word, a great catalyst for the Southdale District and the, and the long-term vision for that district. It's just, and, oh, one other thing, it's just, based on the experience of several of us up here, it's just remarkable, the limited negative commentary received about this project, so I just, I think it's just going to be a great thing for the city and for that district.
And just to add to that, I really appreciate that you didn't come back with, you know, changing the materials and, you know, messing with what we, you came back with the same project, just removing a floor, so it's a beautiful thing. All right, is there a motion? Or do we have?
All right, I'll move, I'll move to approve as submitted.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, I found my agenda again. All right, so reports and recommendations, I'm thinking, nothing? Carrie?
Just the draft work plan.
Work plan, okay.
Yeah, so it's that time of year already to start thinking about our work plan for next year, so just to, so the purpose of it is to, here's our first draft, we can, you know, you can think about it, think about items you might want to add, take off, but this is kind of our, our first run at it. Just to go through, the first item, that's our standard, every year, we're responding to land use applications, that's just our ongoing task. The second initiative is the comprehensive plan follow-up. So that's, once we submit to the Met Council, they will likely come back to us and say, you need to address the X, Y, and Z, whatever that might be. Not one city in the metro area has had their plan accepted at first submission, so we're going to, we can expect, well, maybe, maybe. That would be fantastic. So the third initiative is one from the draft plan, and that's the district plan for the Cahill area.
Discuss that?
Certainly, yeah, so just a quick, so it is a recommendation in the plan, there's no funds available for that. Staff did, and because it's a recommendation in that plan, so we've put it in the council budget for next year, for them to consider providing some funds for the project. So those two things are lining up.
Yeah, so actually, there's a recommendation, as you may recall, the Economic Development Chapter, to, you know, develop a policy for revitalizing our business districts. So my two comments are, one, I don't like defining it by Cahill, because Cahill is actually the boundary. And then it just seems like it's a bolt-on to the 70th and Cahill Study, which, if you read the Economic Development Chapter, is a much broader section of Edina than just what abuts Cahill Avenue, if you want to name it First Street, like Bush Lake Road or West 77th. But I think the intention coming out of Economic Development was much a broader look at those, you know, business parks in Edina and how to revitalize those. So I don't know if that, I think that lines up with what, it's probably a broader sense of what we want to do than what is, was in the 70th and Cahill plan, because I think that was very nearly focused on the adjacent properties to 70th and Cahill, whereas the economic development was like, we need to look overall at the tax engine that is, you know, the commercial part of Edina. So that was just my observation. So I would actually broaden it away from just not call it Cahill.
Yeah.
And emphasize, you know, in business parks, they're not industrial parks, they are business parks, I believe that is the preferred vernacular now in the real estate business. Yeah, so just a quick, so it, it is a recommendation in the plan. There's no funds available for that. Staff did in, because it's a recommendation in that plan, so we've put it in the council budget for next year for them to consider providing some funds for the project. So those two things are lining up.
Yeah, so actually, there's a recommendation, as you may recall, the economic development chapter, to, you know, develop a policy for revitalizing our business districts. So my two comments are, one, I don't like defining it by Cahill because Cahill is actually the boundary. And then it just seems like it's a bolt-on to the 70th and Cahill study, which if you read the economic development chapter, is a much broader section of Edina than just what abuts Cahill Avenue. If you want to name it, First Street, like Bush Lake Road or West 77th. But I think the intention coming out of the economic development was much a broader look at those, you know, business parks in Edina and how to revitalize those. So I don't know if that, I think that lines up with what, it's probably a broader sense of what we want to do than what is, was in the 70th and Cahill plan, because I think that was very nearly focused on the adjacent properties to 70th and Cahill, whereas the economic development was like, we need to look overall at the tax engine that is, you know, the commercial part of Edina. So that was just my observation. So I would actually broaden it away from just not call it Cahill. And emphasize, you know, in business parks, they're not industrial parks, they are business parks, I believe that is the preferred vernacular now in the real estate business. So I think that's the direction we should go with that.
Yeah, great, great points. So I will work on some revised language and bring that back for the next.
That was really good, Carrie.
Any other comments on that initiative? Okay.
And then, so the next item is, there is a, so, once the draft comprehensive plan is approved, we have to resolve land use conflicts between the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. And the only ones that are created is within that 70th and Cahill study area where the properties are zoned industrial, but we're guiding them as mixed use. So we need to rectify that. So there's two properties on the south side of Amundsen, maybe three, that need to be rezoned. So we would have, once the plan is adopted and approved by the Met Council, we have, I believe it's 180 days to bring the land use into conformance. So that's the reason for that one showing up. And then the last initiative, I put all of our zoning ordinance amendments that we've talked about into one category. And these we will, will work on as we move throughout the year. But they would be height regulations in the 70th and Cahill area. Again, there's some inconsistencies with the comp plan and zoning in regard to height. We need to increase heights in the zoning. We've talked about, should we require basements within new homes? So that's one for consideration. We've also talked about that one-foot rule, is that really working for us? So one to consider. Also, one that we've, this is, I believe the planning commission a few years back recommended requiring just a one-stall garage and not a two. So we've had that discussion. We've talked about perhaps making another recommendation to the city council to change that. The single-family homes in an R2 district, we've had some discussion about, should we allow single-family homes in, in that district? Secondary dwelling units, that restaurant odor issue that came up, I believe, at our last meeting. We've talked about updating the tree ordinance and updating our building materials requirement. That was prevalent, especially in the Southdale district plan. We need to tighten those regulations up a little bit. So those are what I came up with at first blush from my recollection. Open for discussion.
In deference to Commissioner Morata, could we also add drive-throughs? Whether they should, when, if they should be allowed?
So you're saying the height regulations in 70th and Cahill, there's some discrepancies. So should that be pushed up to the one above where we know that we have to make some changes?
Well, that's probably a good idea. We could do those at the same time.
Yeah, because we know we have to, right?
Right.
Anybody else have anything to add? Go ahead, Commissioner.
A couple other things to discuss perhaps. One is, in this, do we need to say anything in here about, I, I think that the City Economic Development Group is going to be reviewing the parking, the parking strategy at 44th and France. Is that something we need to say is an initiative of ours also or that we'll be dedicating time to? That's why I have two items, that's one item.
So that is in the council work plan and CIP. Should the conclusion be, yes, we need to do some district parking, kind of, you know, in the back where we talked about it? That does come back to the planning commission in your regular land use regulatory review. So I think it's kind of a wait and see what the council does with it and it would eventually land back with you.
It, it does seem like it'd better fit with Bill Nuyendorf, for example, someone to actually interface with the business owners and come up with a business-based strategy for parking and get a, get a group. So that, you know, seems more, probably a better fit there than with us, I suppose.
Yeah, and it's going to be a joint, it's going to be a team effort with staff. It'll be, engineering will be involved, I'll be involved, and Bill as well.
Okay. Now I've done something to my computer. My second one is, do we need to review the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines to see if there's anything from that that we should codify or how, or how we handle those?
Yeah, so that's, that's a good thought. Staff will be, so on this year's work plan, you know, we've got the impervious surface and we're working on some things. So we will be bringing to the planning commission for consideration a whole, a list of zoning changes. Include, I'm going to include in there our 50-foot setback, you know, the 50-foot setback and the 30-foot setback from the curb. It's been, that's one of the top priorities, as we saw with the sketch plan, where they weren't meeting that, we'd really need to have some teeth into that. So some of those things, I think, we'll tackle even this year. But it's a, but might, that could be a topic unto itself, just as you had stated it, consideration of the design experience guidelines and turning some of that into city code.
That's my thought, is, should we look at it?
I mean, just, how do we exactly, do we do that? I know we wanted to keep that separate, so, you know, we're not always amending that or those guidelines. I mean, I know we're not adopting the whole thing or switching it over, but is it just something that we should keep track of if we start to see, like with the 50-foot setbacks and 30-foot setback and just see how it kind of plays out or?
Yeah, and in my experience too, is, you know, we, we've got the policy that we're going to be following these. As we review projects, you start to see, okay, this needs to be more than a policy. We need to have more teeth in that. So as we use the design experience guidelines more and more over time, things like that will pop up that, that'll tell us all, okay, we need to put that into ordinance now, we need to advance it a little bit beyond.
Right.
But having it separate on a work plan keeps it front and center.
Okay. But that doesn't prevent us from addressing it right away. I mean, we don't have to say that we weren't doing, updating the work plan or whatever and we were seeing that 50, 50-foot setback. We could just initiate that, right? It doesn't have to be part of the work plan and?
It does. Yeah, and that's why I'm going to put it into this, this other ordinance work that we've been.
Okay.
Working on. So we'll, you'll see that in the next couple of months.
Okay. Any other, do you have anything, Lou?
Yeah, and I don't know, maybe this will be part of the Southdale district implementation plan. But, you know, last time we had, or the last couple sessions, we've seen, you know, very low buildings in the Southdale district and thought that we should have minimums in Southdale and/or the small areas.
So as you recall, that was in a early draft version, but it was pulled out. So it's not a recommendation in the, in the guidelines.
If I could just address that for a moment. That was discussed as part of the Southdale working group and it was decided not to have that. So I'd rather keep it the way it is for now. I, in the last meeting, brought up the ideal, idea of minimums in response to a comment about form-based code because lots of, my understanding of form-based code, this, this phrase, "form-based code" is unformed in our discussions and it seems to be being used as any, you know, oh, form-based code, this doesn't, you know. And I just wanted to point out in the last meeting that a lot of guidance for form-based code actually is to have minimums. I don't think, I would not, I, I would let the Southdale work plan live how it is for now based on the, that was the experience of that work group and not add minimums at this time because that wasn't the desire. I think that's obviously something as we're all going to be on this commission for a few more years, as we see we, we may want to address. There are several good reasons to have minimums, but I would let the Southdale smaller, the plan, small area plan live on its own for a couple of years. I don't know, Joanne, what, what do you think?
I agree with what you're saying because I know that we did consider and we took it out, so that's why it's kind of hard because I'm kind of a fan of doing that. It's frustrating to see the one-story buildings on there, but, so, I say let it play out.
There are many good reasons to have minimums.
And to add to that too, as you recall, the minimum that was recommended was eight stories. So we could consider, you know, a lower number, if that's something that works its way through at some point.
I mean, I would strongly suggest we consider some sort of minimums, not the, perhaps the six, but at a level that begets quality construction in that, that district. I think otherwise it's, you know, as you look, a lot of those smaller parcels are reaching obsolescence or be replaced. I don't think we want to see them necessarily become standalone one-story buildings surrounded by a parking lot. And I think unless you put the, the mechanisms in to enforce that, that's the easiest path to go and that's what you're going to wind up seeing. And I don't think that's the intention of, of anybody involved in this. I don't think maybe six stories would be the minimum, but certainly some, you know, want to be thoughtfully considered.
The design guidelines do suggest, you know, the minimum, the 20-foot tall building, which you recall are the last one-story project that came through, they did meet that. You know, you think of like the Shake Shack is not that tall. It's something to, you know, so that's one thing that's in the design guidelines. We could look at it in that context.
So how would we go about looking at that? Would it just be us and, you know, you, or do we bring back some of the, do we bring Mick back into the picture? How, because it seems like that is kind of a, you know, it's, it's, doesn't seem right to just, this is what was approved and then we change it.
Yeah, certainly. So, yeah, Mick, you know, he'll continue doing his reviews of the bigger projects in the Southdale area. So we do have him as a resource that, yeah, I would think anytime we're looking at the design guidelines and putting them into code, that we would seek his assistance to help us.
Could I, could I suggest something? Because I'm, I'm intrigued by the minimums too. But what if that were different from the other things we're talking about? It's not part of the design experience guidelines, it's not part of an ordinance issued on a review, but it is definitely a topic that bears further study. Before we would get to an ordinance item, what if we had a standalone item where it was just for 2020 to study minimums? Study the, study the benefits, study the, you know, the pros and cons, the, the how you would roll it out if you ever wanted to do it. We wouldn't have the plan for 2020 to actually make a change to an ordinance, but we would have the plan to get smarter about how that's done and, and the benefits from it and the, and any ramification, negative ramifications that we'd have to address. That's just my suggestion because I think it's a good topic. I think, I do think in a few years, we're going, if we do nothing now, I think in a few years, we're going to want, this is going to be an issue that will, people will want to study.
Yeah, I, I think we need to study it, you know, not just from a design experience point of view, but also from a transportation point of view and that, you know, if you, you know, we want to reduce parking in buildings that we're having built, then you need transit. And if, to have transit, you know, even a 20, 20-foot tall, single-story building isn't adding any density, right? So, so it's a density issue, it's a transportation issue, it's a lot of things. So I don't know how, I wasn't there for those meetings, so I don't know in what context it was presented. And I don't think eight stories is a, is a good minimum either, but, but I think, you know, there's a lot going on there and I think it's worth discussing.
And my only concern is like to have a complete separate study on it. I really think that we did address a lot of those items when we were reviewing it and I think it was solely because it was just too high, you know, the minimum was too high. And it was also then on the western side of France and I think we're being a little bit more considerate with what, you know, the transition zone. So, I don't know, it's, it's a hard one because we're, we're going right back in and, and changing it, but it is frustrating. I think if we study, I don't want to go into too much of a rabbit hole with all that or, I feel like we did cover a lot of those items when we went through.
Yeah, and if I could just add too, that, you know, there, there's a lot of things here. We have to think about our time and we've got a lot on the list here. We want to accomplish most, if not all of them, but I, I just concerned about how much we can do in one year.
One thing I want to add to, to though, also, Joanne, is I, I felt like when we were doing this, in the Southdale discussions, that because we decided, I don't think we had a full discussion of the ramifications of doing that, so that's why I'd want to study. Because I think we just said, I think we looked at it and said, no, you know, that's not right. And I think that there were some negative ramifications and some benefits that we didn't fully get into. On the positive side, I think we didn't look at environment, you know, benefits, environmental issues. On the negative side, I don't think we fully vetted what impact this would have to people that own property today, if there's any kind of expectations they have regarding use that were, you know, and so those are the things that, before I would even propose a number, roll it out, I'd want to know, you know, what really, what are the benefits to the community that, you know, I'd want a full list and I'd also want to fully understand, you know, are we doing something to a property owner that is restricting their use in such a way that they could have like a claim against us, against the city? And I feel like we didn't fully cover all those issues because we just decided, hmm, that's not where we wanted to go, but.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. And we would need to be careful too to, from establishing regulations that are going to prevent redevelopment of property. You know, the, the standards could become so high that it makes it difficult. So, yeah, those are all good things to study. And I might add too, that even if, we've talked a little bit about this, even if it's listed as an item for change to the ordinance, doesn't mean we have to make a specific recommendation. As we get into the study, we might conclude, oh, no, maybe we don't want to do that.
Yeah, just one more thing to consider is that, you know, apparently the, the minimum was pretty high, eight stories. I mean, this could be an ongoing thing where we would say, okay, well, let's make it two stories and try it and see how it goes and, you know, whatever. And then we could just, if, if need be, if we get a lot of two-story things and we don't think they're appropriate, we could look at raising it again. But, you know, I think it's, I think there's, I don't think there's a whole lot of discussion to say two stories should be the minimum, you know, and kind of go from there.
Okay. Sounds good. So what's the process then, Carrie? You said we can, this will come back to us again or?
Yeah, I can make some revisions here and put it on our next agenda and we can have another discussion.
Okay. And so, and then we're done with the discussion and it moves on?
Yeah, once it's in draft form, as you recall, we have a work session with the city council where the chair, you get to present the, the commission work plan and the council may edit as they deem necessary. Might add things, take things off.
Okay.
And I believe that is scheduled for sometime in October, so we're a little bit ahead of the game here.
Okay. Do we have to take formal action on this, Carrie, or?
I, you don't need to this evening, eventually, once we get to the end, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, anyone else? Didn't want to cut anyone off now. So you'll still have a chance. You can give us some thought if there's something more you want to add. Let's see, so next we've got the correspondence and petitions. I don't think we have anything on that. Chair and member comments, anyone have any? Go for it.
Oops, just want to comment on a few things in the news about climate change. Today, the Netherlands, Belgium, and Germany each recorded the highest-ever temperatures in their countries. The UK and Luxembourg are likely to fall tomorrow with their record temperatures. Obviously, we had a lot of hot weather and very high dew points that's moved to the east coast now. The first glacier lost to climate change in Iceland has been memorialized with a plaque, which is not a great thing. And so they predict within 200 years, Iceland will lose all of its glaciers, there'll be none left. So, you know, things that we do here kind of behooves us to, to deal with climate change. I know, was it Saturday or Sunday when we had all that rain, you know, that, in our neighborhood anyway, there was, rain was just torrential for like over an hour, you know, the normally thing you would expect for five or 10 minutes. Climate change is real and it's. thing you would expect for five or 10 minutes. It's, climate change is real, and it's happening. And I think we have, you know, everything that we do, we need to look to make sure that we address these issues. And then, one thing not quite related to that, is we talked about on our last, in our last session, we had, there was some discussion about a sidewalk on France, because we wanted to leave it, I wanted to leave it in, and we had a discussion about it, because even though it's a terrible sidewalk, it's, it's decent as a bike path, sort of thing, right? And we hadn't really flushed it out through the Southdale program. So, Seattle is putting in European-style intersections now. They're testing them out, where they've got these sort of oval-shaped islands in the corners, and the bike lanes are protected throughout the intersection. So, one thing we don't do well in Edina is that our bike lanes just kind of end when we come to intersections. And Minnesota has mixing zones, and, which is the most dangerous place to be on a bicycle. And I'm seeing more and more families, parents, children biking. And I think it behooves us to, to make sure that we look at, especially in the Southdale area, and, and in our nodes, to make sure that we have safe bike intersections, so. Thank you.
So, I totally agree with what you're saying. And how do we, so, I'm going back to you, you know, because we did have a discussion with the Transportation Chair and Co-Chair. And how, so, how do we promote that type of design, or bringing in more protected bike lanes? And is that something for Transportation Commission to carry forward, or?
Yeah, I think so, in terms of, you know, as citywide, but we can, you know, look at it on the project-by-project basis.
So, yeah, I mention it because, you know, the Southdale District Plan talks about sidewalks and whatnot. So, so, yeah, it is kind of fuzzy as to, you know, and whether we have somebody from Transportation on the Southdale District Group to make sure that, you know, we're getting feedback on that.
Well, so, just like, that's a nice segue. So, we did have that meeting, and help me with this, Carrie and I, and if I miss something. Because they, we've always, you know, we've known that they've been interested in reviewing plans or having more say. And we've kind of also said, there's been times where we're like, we wanted to have more power to be able to say that the traffic studies look beyond just cars, and look at the whole multimodal piece. So, it was really a good meeting. And I, you know, I think we all agreed to stay in touch, and also to bring in the whole, you know, Energy and Environment Group, just to kind of continue those, you know, partnerships that we tried to identify with the comp plan, to really carry forward some of these items, and...
Yeah, if I could add, so, this, this was one of our work plan items for this year, is for the Transportation and Planning Commission to talk about process, and is there a role for them in our review process? So, we, so, the, the Chair and Vice Chairs of each Commissions met last week, and we had a fantastic meeting. And I think we've, a few things came from it. One, we'd like to have a work session at our next Planning Commission meeting day, which is August 14th. So, that will be from 6:00 to 7:00. We also talked a little bit about the, the role for them in the review process. So, what we agreed to do is, when the plans come in with a development application, they get routed to the different, all the different staff departments in the city. When engineering gets their set of plans, they will share with members of the Transportation Commission. And that would be their opportunity to provide comment to the staff liaison, who writes that engineering report that you all get in your project. So, there will be a separate heading bullet point for kind of the Transportation Commission review and comment on a project. You know, we had concerns about the 60-day rule, and how could, how could an evaluation from that group fit into that process? So, we're, we will start that process with the next application that comes in. We also talked about when we hire a traffic and parking consultant. You know, they've been adding, you know, conversation about sidewalks and bikes, but it's, sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't. So, we thought we should work on a specific, this is the set of criteria that has to go into all of our parking and traffic studies. So, it's a checklist, so we can just hand that to the consultant. And this is what we expect for every, for every project that comes through. So, we'll talk about some of those things at this, at the work session.
So, good summary.
I have a couple of other things, unless there's other commission comments. So, back to your recommendation on that France project, you recall the, the retail building there on France, the City Council reviewed that at their last meeting, and they agreed with the Planning Commission recommendation to leave that sidewalk. So, that was, they agreed with all the conditions that the Commission put on that plan. Also, the subdivision over on Oaklawn, they reviewed and approved that, and again, they agreed with all your conditions. So, the reducing of the height of that southern lot, the tying in to the, the drain tile on the east lot line, and the elimination of the driveway. So, job well done at your last meeting. All those conditions carried through.
Motion to adjourn?
Is it a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're so anxious. So, meeting adjourned.